It's meeting order, sir. This is the, pardon? I did turn it on already. Good to go. Um. Well, sir, would they please, please, Ryan?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so my house beeping here, um, the emergency access or it's already came in, the one you have over here. Uh, we do have a emergency generator communication power. Uh, let's see what else am I supposed to say? Do you have a vote, silence on your cell phone? Mar wants isn't anything else you might have, please, that might interrupt us? Everyone needs to have signed in for the clerk notes who's here. Uh, we found the rules procedures that we adopted uh, on January fourth of this year. And, um. Uh, one of the things we do have some new speakers, some new microphones in the room. I currently have them off, but as you get to speak, I'll turn them on now. They're warm you that they pick up everything that's being said. So if there's a little sidebar conversation, you'll end up on the uh, YouTube video uh, with your sidebar. So I just warn you ahead of time, don't want to have anybody be embarrassed. So, uh, and I don't turn them on till we actually have interaction with the the crowd or with the attendee. So with that, next item up is the approval of the minutes of last meeting. Everybody have a chance to review them? Any comments? About motion? Move down a second. Yep, yeah, move to second, all favors, they probably staying high. Aye. Two extension. Okay. Take care of the approval of minutes, uh, legal notices were published Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Order of business will be as the uh, agenda is on the table, first order of business PB zero five zero one day twenty-three. Does the use permit public hearing? So this is for, uh, Duell Pareda? Do I have someone that you would you just kind of turn on the speaker? You can tell us what you're doing and what's going on. Okay, you're ready to go.
I didn't know if I was speaking or my husband was speaking, I really, I felt the paperwork, but, um, basically, we've been residents of Farmington for over thirty years, we own our home and our business. And our previous location, we were there for twenty-two years. And we had our special use permit there and we moved to this location. Nothing has changed with the way we do anything, conduct our business or anything. We had, we were in a agricultural district prior, but we had a lot of residential very close to us and we've, if, if you see, if you looked at our record, we've never had one complaint over the twenty-two years that we were at our last location.
Okay.
So basically that's it where we are now and the area that we also, we own the parcel where our home is, but we also own the adjoining, I think together with all three parcels, it was the Chunkle Farm, there's a little over forty acres that we own total and it's farmed currently.
Uh huh.
So basically that's pretty much it, I think.
Okay, we'll turn it over stack, we'll run down stack, then we'll get any public comments. And then we'll go from there, Ron.
Yeah, I, we reviewed the project, we prepared a resolution for continuation.
Right.
There is a need for information that we've identified. Uh, send it out to the applicant and their engineer and surveyor. And, uh, I think that's the action that we're looking to do tonight.
Okay. Dan, Phil, you part?
Yeah, uh, Ron summed it up nicely with what's in the resolution. Um, some of the big concerns though is there has to be an interpretation of what is being operation there of, of the, the business, uh. To be a business out of your home, we have to look at to make sure that you're not over that fifty percent rule. So residential has outweigh the uh, the business per, per code to be a home business.
Right.
Uh, if it, if it's more on the business side, then we have, uh, there's a different route that has to be traveled as a actual business. They're going to have to uh, apply for special use permits and probably variances. So after tonight, um, I will take what we hear tonight. I will, I will work with the zoning officer and then I will make an interpretation of if we view this as a home business or if it's not, doesn't fall in that category. So, uh, the other big thing that has to be addressed is there is a lot of stuff happening on the site. So I think that in the resolution, it calls out to have a um, site plan developed by licensed engineer, architect or land surveyor. Um, because we also have to deal with some outdoor storage and I know that's always a, a big topic for this board.
It certainly is.
So again, this is why, uh, our recommendation is for it to be continued, um, as we work through, through this project.
Okay, thank you. Highway?
Um, as for the highway, I think everything previously was instructed and the manner it should have been, so it's highway, I don't have any issues with it.
Perfect. In town engineer?
Uh, yeah, we did, I, I think for the most part for a minor, uh, I think to kind of follow up with a code enforcement officer, I think just getting a plan that kind of identifies the limits of where the storage is being located, those type of things that the board I know would be looking for on the plan. Um, just in a statement of operations, I think may have been provided, but we were looking for maybe a little bit more detail as to what exactly is operating on the site, just because that runs with the special use permit. So all in all, I think we're, I'm pretty content with what's been provided, but a little bit more information as referenced earlier.
Okay. It's just a public hearing, do we have anybody in the room or online that would like to speak for or against this project? Yes, sir, they please say your name and your address?
My name is Craig Rocker, I'm forty-five thirteen State Street, I live right across the road.
Okay.
The brothers, and I'm just curious, um, is it, does this permit continue after the brothers either move or sell their business? Will this, will this special?
Answer is yeah, it goes with the land, special use permit goes with the land.
It goes with the land?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, it's not by the business, by the land. That was a state, that was a state determination, if I'm not mistaken, state made that determination.
Yeah, and is there some type of written plan as though what all is going to go out there?
Well, we received some information, but as Dan said, we are going to be asking, and part of the resolution is going to ask for some more information to include an actual site plan by a, uh, by an engineer, so we can see where everything's going, where the um, outside storage might be, those types of things, so that we can look at. Now, it hasn't been determined yet whether it's going to be a business or whether this could be a home occupation. The problem with a home occupation is the size of the business cannot be more than fifty percent of the size of the dwelling. So with a barn, that's usually much more than the dwelling many times, so it's very hard to get a home occupation if you're using a barn. So that's something that the code officer needs to look at. But the answer is yes, we're going to end up with a, a site plan. And then we're going to determine what the actual determination is. And then we'll determine what goes from there, but there'll be a special use to make either way, whether it's a home occupation or whether it is a business. Anything else?
So is it possible for me to get that site plan or?
Once it's submitted, once we get it on for the next, or a meeting,
Yeah.
it'll be available in the building office, um, certainly.
Yeah.
To be able to be seen.
For the record, uh, the brothers have I have no issues with them, uh, as of yet, with anything that they've done over there regarding stuff. How they're running their business, very, very professional.
Very good, thank you very much. Anyone else have any input? Or against, anyone online, is there anyone online?
No one's online.
No one's online, I guess we don't have to worry about that. Okay, let's start with the board. Okay, anybody on the board have any comments on this one?
I understand, um, based on the resolution. We are here to consider that explains it. Additional.
Well, Doug? Adrian?
Um, yeah, I just need to ask you.
Okay.
Nothing.
Aaron?
Nothing, so, uh, I get the rest.
Oh, have you had a chance to review the resolution that we sent? Okay, I guess I better reuse some of the conditions of approval. Um. Yeah, this is going to be a continuation of the project or of this application because we don't have a couple things, so let me see if I can help out here exactly what we're talking about, um. Now therefore be resolved as the planning board is hereby moved to table this deliberation upon the request act to continue this public hearing to an unknown future date and time. It therefore resolves the planning board requested town code enforcement officer to make a determining interpretation based on the information received at tonight's public hearing on whether the application may be considered to be a major home occupation or the term is as the term is defined in the code as further regulated within a different section of code related to major home occupation. It therefore resolves that the applicant, once an interpretation is made by the town code enforcement officer, this application is defined as a major home occupation and all the criteria contained within chapter one fifty-five as it been adequately identified is then to make application to the town zoning board of appeals for an area variance to provisions as it relates to special use permit, uh, based upon the information received tonight. Uh, it is determined by the planning board to be extensive in that it dominates the principal structure of permitted residential use of property, meaning that your, your barn area is bigger than your home area thus it much greater than a fifty percent. So there's, there are, there are the variants that could be made depending on whether it's determined to be a home occupation or not. Uh, it further resolves the western area variance is granted by the town zoning board of appeals, then a detailed preliminary site plan. You gotta have a detailed preliminary site plan prepared by a licensed professional engineer or land surveyor, and of course with provisions contained in the code. Uh, and submit, which, which to be submitted as part of the planning board's continued deliberation on this special use permit. It further resolved that there is a short environmental assessment form that needs to be prepared the current special use permit application to any uh, before any deliberations of the planning board. In addition, in event that there is an application for an area variance, a separate, um, short environmental assessment form will need to be provided. Finally, there should be a future preliminary site plan application and more detailed separate, uh, environmental assessment form for an application. Um. Okay, I'm going to give you a copy of this since you don't have one. Um, and you can, uh, go from there. I assume, although I'm sure you're not happy, that you understand these conditions or you will. And you can certainly reach out to the code officer's office and they'll tell you all the detail of what this really means. And the biggest picture is, is when Dan finally makes a determination of whether this is a home occupation or whether it's a business, and that will determine what you need to do and how you need to do it from there. So I'll give you a copy of this. Um, so we have a resolution with conditions uh, prepared to table this application, do I have someone moving? Moved by Doug, second by? Aaron, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both with?
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Doug Beeks?
Aye.
Karen Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Ed Hemminger?
Aye, okay. You can have this if you want, and then we will have it and, uh, the next step will be to when Dan makes a determination for you, okay? Thank you. Okay, next item up, we have site plans. PB zero five oh two dash twenty-three preliminary site plan approval. PB zero five oh three oh three, no, zero five oh two, zero five oh three is the final. This is for the Tyson, for the preliminary and final site plan to rebuild their house. So if you could just kind of give you a little overview of what's going on, we can go from there.
Yeah, um, I've lived on um, over at fifty twelve Harndon Road, um, that, been there for fifteen years. On February fifteenth, uh, we had an electrical fire, lost the house. Um, total loss, house is torn down. I've been dealing with Dan and Augie, um, and I'm having Gerber Homes build me a new house. Um, and just here trying to keep things moving and trying to get a house built, so.
Okay. Um, I'm going to turn to the staff, you know, you've seen the red, you've seen the the, uh, resolutions with condition?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, we'll go turn it, we've got, uh, three resolutions, we've got a secret resolution. You got a preliminary site plan approval with conditions, then we've got a final site plan approval with condition. We'd like to do a ball tonight for you so you can help you get along and move things along and, uh, turn to staff first.
I think, I think you summarized my presentation, I didn't look.
I wanted to understand where, where we were going with this and we're trying to help you out here. But there are conditions and that's there are a lot of things that we do, once you have to redo something, you gotta meet the current condition, whatever it is, nobody's happy, but.
I, I.
Yeah, but it. Dan?
Yeah, so, I, I definitely appreciate, I've been working with the applicant and appreciate the board considering both the preliminary and final tonight, I know that's not a, a normal procedure, but due to the circumstances, I, I do appreciate that consideration. Uh, the house is pretty close to being where the old one was, it's a little bit bigger, different shape, uh, Gerber Homes has, uh, provided the site plan for us. Uh, there's some conditions on there and, uh, this is pretty straightforward and I, I don't really have much more to say than that.
Okay, Highway, Tim?
Um, yeah, so anytime with the new with the site design, there's the driveway that is needs an asphalt material in there, I can work with you on that, you can stop by and, you know, may not necessarily need to be asphalt, but an asphalt material may like milling or something that can go in there.
Okay.
Other than that.
Thank you.
Very good.
Is your Aaron?
No, I don't have any comments on this.
Cool. Okay, next up would be Stan or Board, Aaron?
Good to go.
Adrian?
Didn't see it, but that house now is going to be a little bigger than the old one or something, what, what?
Okay.
Square footage, I'm seeing?
The square footage, I think like a couple hundred square foot bigger, but the house comes with a two car garage now. That the old house did not have. So that, that's the only difference, still same, two story, it's I think it's like four foot longer, I mean, but the house, the additional, the actual house is about the same.
Yeah, okay, no, I'm good.
I'm, I'm good. Kevin?
One, two, three, I'm good.
There you go, and I don't have anything additional, uh, you have ready conditions and you agree to them?
Yep.
Okay, so next first item up is we have a secret resolution to have a motion to wait for reading and approve the resolution as presented. Motion by Tim, second by? Adrian, any other comment? Clerk take a roll call, both please.
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Doug Beeks?
Aye.
Karen Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas? Ed Hemminger?
Aye. Secretism, that's state environment quality review, that's a requirement for everything, so we got that out of the way. Next item would be a preliminary site plan approval with conditions, do I have a motion to wait for reading and approve that resolution? Moved by Adrian, second by? Tim, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both please.
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Doug Beeks?
Aye.
Karen Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, preliminary is done, next item up would be the final site plan approval with conditions, uh, have a motion to wait for reading and approve the resolution as presented.
I'll move.
Moved by Adrian, second by?
Aaron?
Aaron, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both please.
DeLucia?
Aye.
Doug Beeks?
Aye.
Karen Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Aye. You are complete. Any questions and everything, you gotta get these, these site plans in so that we can sign them. Dan and his team are the ones that.
Yeah, already gave me one. The only thing I noticed is this one sits the preliminary, I need one that says final. So.
So we'll take care of that and, uh, they know when needs to be done, so. Thank you very much, and I'm glad you're rebuilding here in the town.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, next item up, uh, PB zero five zero four days twenty-three, final site plan approval for West New York Bridge Warehouse Project. Off in the corner there by the, uh, parking lot, so let me turn the mic on for you, any, uh, additional changes and comments?
Uh, well, just wanted to say thanks to everybody for helping us through this project, uh, we've come a long way and I kind of call this project a hat trick because we did variance rezoning and site plan approvals. Not that, you know, it's not common, but.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Um, so we, uh, received from MRB, Mr. Bravon a letter on Friday afternoon, uh, and it regarded mostly minor drainage technical issues from stormwater management. Uh, we looked into those, we called Mr. Bravon this afternoon and, uh, we discussed those, uh, issues and I believe he agreed that we can, we can sort them out, they're very minor. Uh, once we do that, we'll complete the SWIP report and submit the, uh, NOI to MRV and the DDC for the stormwater permit. Uh, we did see your draft resolution, um. I submitted a, uh, engineer's estimate to MRV crew. Um, waiting back for confirmation on that, I think we're pretty much, pretty close to that. And, uh, we submitted the easements to the town last week or so and, uh, your attorney is working on getting those filed, so that'd be great. And the one outstanding issue is the stormwater maintenance agreement, not sure how to move forward with that.
I can get off there, I'd like to.
Okay, cool, thanks. So, uh, just wanted to see any questions or comments?
No, we'll go around and hit the staff and see what they got, uh, Ron?
Yeah, normally the, the, um, project review committee meets once a month. And we try to schedule pre-construction needs for those trades.
Right.
It looks like the pre-construction meeting uh, most likely will be held the first part of June, first meeting, first Thursday in June. Um, to, to move forward on this. But that meets with your schedule and timeframe.
Yeah, I just have to get, uh, Jeff, the site work, um, company to, you'd probably like him to be there, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It, it, it explains a lot of details that MRV will go into with you work hours, holidays, things of this nature.
Correct.
Um, all of the letter of credit, there's no reason you can't proceed with getting the letter of credit reviewed and perhaps before this board at your second meeting.
I was gonna say that's probably the key piece, is making sure you guys get the letter of credit in as soon as you can humanly do it, so we can get it on to our next meeting in, uh, May, so we can be ready and completed, the town board is signed up on it. So you're ready to go on the first part of June, you can have a pre-construction.
Just to add to that, we did receive it, we've got a, a couple rounds through it.
Okay.
I think we're pretty close, so I, I think they'll be in good shape to.
Good.
More.
Anything else, Ron?
No, I, I, you know, I appreciate Land Tech working with us. I appreciate Mr. Smith and all also working with us, so it's been a, uh, interesting hat trick as as you say, and the one that all the puzzles fit together and the pieces came together and we got a picture to. So, let's go.
Hey, Dan?
Yeah, uh, I, I also want to talk about the project review committee, um, tomorrow, obviously, we're meeting tomorrow morning. Um, we'll, I'll talk about your project as one of the lists that's on the list. We'll talk about the items that need to be turned in for a pre-construction meeting with the hopes that it will be in the first meeting of June. Um, so I think we're on the right track. But tomorrow's an important meeting because we'll be pretty much by the planning board and they're really starting to switch to staff and the building department and we'll talk about building permits and uh, the timeframe for all that, so, but for on the application tonight, I do not have any comments.
Cool, Highway?
Um, the only thing, maybe pre-construction meeting or tomorrow, I'm just kind of looking for how you guys are going to start this project, like how are you going to get your construction insurance in? Where are you going to stage your equipment? And spend all that stuff. Working out of a upper parking, the parking lot, so. Just want to know what your plan is to get in there and get things off so they're in there. Um, you know, the first thing to do is to clear the trees out there.
Correct.
Yeah. So I'm kind of looking for that as what kind of a plan you've got going forward with the project. You're getting in there.
Yeah, that's what I said we got.
Okay. Cool, thank you. Uh, Lance?
Yes, as mentioned, uh, we did issue a letter, it was Friday, most of our site plan related comments have been addressed both with the preliminary and then ultimately the final. Uh, the remaining comments are really strictly related to just technical stuff as it relates to the drainage report, which is typical. So, uh, as mentioned, we did have a conversation with them, uh, we'll continue to work through it and get this addressed and, uh, I don't see any issues.
Cool. Okay, board, uh, Tim?
Uh, no, I understand the guests, so I'm good to go.
Doug?
I'm good to go.
Adrian?
I'm good.
Aaron?
There you go.
I would just like to go on the record and say thank you very much for taking a very odd parcel in our town and making a useful so something. Um, it, uh, that's an odd, odd piece of property and as you know, you've gone through a lot. Well, we appreciate the fact that you've taken it on, you've done a good job, and I think we're going to be really happy with the results, so.
Totally appreciate it.
Yeah.
It was a dream and imagination, nice.
Well.
Big trip.
No longer a dream. Now we gotta execute, so it's really worked out good and.
I was crunching.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, but it's really important that some of these weird parcels we have, and we have a number of, but that's one of the weirdest we have.
Yeah.
And we gotta take care of, you're going to make a useful useful property, so we appreciate that very much. So with that, I have a final site plan approval with conditions, you've read the conditions, no problems with the condition. So I was asked if I had someone to move this resolution with conditions and wait for reading. So move, move by Doug, second by? Adrian, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both please.
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Doug Beeks?
Aye.
Karen Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellas?
Aye.
Ed Hemminger?
Aye. Good to go. Final site plan is in, work with staff, get that final in there so we get it signed. Do all the PRT stuff, then you guys will be breaking ground before you know it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, appreciate it. Have a good day.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next item up is, there's no other board action, open discussion. Director Development, Ron?
I'm writing them down as they.
So they're fixed.
As they pop to your head.
Yeah. Um.
Don't hurt yourself.
I got a lot. Okay.
Gonna run out of ink.
Then went quicker than I thought. Um, Union Cross?
Union Cross.
Member of the Blackwood?
That's the Blackwood.
Okay.
Forty-one.
We met with the, uh, African Friday? Yeah. Friday and, uh, they are going to be submitting every live site plan. Their intent is to keep the square footage approved for all the buildings over there. Reduce one of the large buildings and, and place, uh, two um, climate controlled, uh, mini storage facility. So they're preparing the applications for that. And we'll be submitting that hopefully in the near future. To.
Okay, it'll be ours to decide.
Yeah.
So they're taking basically one of the warehouses and break in for the building?
Starting it in half and then, and talking about two, uh, pre-standing. Two, pre-standing, three-story facilities.
Three-story?
Yeah, so it matches the height of the warehouses. The other thing that is involved is that they have been asked by GRE, Greater Rochester Enterprises. The other thing that is involved is that they have been asked by GRE, Greater Rochester Enterprises. To see if they can use one of those, uh, buildings that was originally designed for, uh, flex space. For manufacturing of some kind. And we're waiting to hear on that. But.
Uh, I would get that staff to take a good look at parking requirements and all of that and.
Absolutely.
Now, everything there is sprinkled, right?
Yep, yep.
So that helps me a little bit on the fire side.
Oh, we, we brought up parking concerns and they reminded us that the lots were designed for tractor trailers to back in. So when you start looking at that, you can fit a lot of cars where a tractor trailer would park, so.
True.
That was between them.
Right, they would make that more parking than just.
So there wouldn't be all those loading docks.
Right, they would, they would switch the building from the warehouse with all these loading docks to manufacturer with parking. Is concept what we've been.
Hmm, Eric?
Be interesting to see this plan.
Yeah, I might like to see the plan though with too many warehouses in front of each of those buildings and then the. I don't, we'll see, I hate to try to engineer it on the fly, but it just sounds. Interesting.
Just not ask for your engineering comments today.
Okay, information only. All right, all right.
All right.
What do you got next, Ron?
Next is the ongoing saga of Farmington Market Center. And we've not heard any response back from them.
Hey?
Uh, Farmington GLN, um, still on pause, um, I did talk. With the attorney, Mr. Goldman, and he's been. Cut down, not doing anything on it.
Hmm.
Um, next item along is, uh, a project that, uh. We had several years ago, uh, affectionately known as the water park.
Yes.
That site, about eighty acres, on the east side of three thirty-two, south of forty-one. Has been, uh, a purchase option made. And they're coming in with an incentive zoning pro- project for that area. As you know, that will result in. Eventually the construction of that full four-way intersection on three thirty-two where Savala comes out. And, uh, we'll see where it goes. The one, the one exemption that, that I've learned that they are not including. Is, is, is the, uh, CMI or CDI, that white block building out there, five acre site. Next to the state police, that's, that's not included in this project.
The, the empty automotive, you talking about?
Yeah, whatever the initial.
I think it's empty automotive.
Okay, um. Tomorrow night, here in this building and online, six thirty sidewalk cap project. Uh, public information meeting, um, being explained to the residents what's involved with that. Um, we'll, we'll find out. Uh, more details tomorrow night, but you're all encouraged to come or. Zoom in on it and, and see what the project is involved. The Powers IZ site, as you know. Was, uh, denied by the town board. They have since reached out and are preparing a revised drawing. Cutting down the number of residential dwelling units and providing eighty-foot wide lots, so that will be. Something that maybe we'll get next Tuesday, I don't know, so far we haven't gotten anything on that. Um.
But the project, they have to go back to another public hearing, correct?
They'll, they'll have to go back to another public hearing and depending on what's involved. You know, the planning board may be asked to do another report and recommendation. If it's a reduction in the same impacts, you may.
Maybe.
Wave it, whatever.
Maybe a secret or change to, probably not.
Who knows? Um, the other thing is we did met, meet with the, uh, realtor today for Henry Hanson's. Property over there on forty-one, the, uh, former Hanson Metal Fabrication. Facility and they're trying to figure out how to market that, what they need to do with that project. And, um. No?
And he's trying to sell it though, right?
Trying to sell it and he wants to know. What, you know, what the town wants there and. We said something other than a blue metal building.
Yeah, something that fits into the. Everything going on out there.
Exactly. And last, um, I was tasked with the assignment of updating the, um. Chapter nine provisions for the town's agricultural advisory committee. Chapter nine is identified as boards, committees and commissions. And as I got into the weeds on that, I discovered that we only have two articles in chapter nine. One is for the historic preservation commission. And the other one is for the architectural, or the agricultural advisory board. Um, but that's out of date. Um, there's been a lot of changes in state law since that has occurred. And so, uh, the first thing I did was a article two for the ag advisory committee. They met, they've, they've have it and it's under review now. But since there is the title of that chapter, boards, committees and commissions. I realized that we don't have anything in there for the environmental conservation board. We don't have anything in there for the recreation advisory board. And lo and behold, we don't have anything in there for the planning board. So I'm going to hand out to you tonight a preliminary draft of that, uh, local law. To, uh, amend chapter nine, identifying the duties and responsibilities of the board. Because right now you're referenced by references to other sections of town law. Some of which have changed in, in the scope and definition. And, uh, it doesn't replace your rules or procedure.
Right.
You know, but it does provide for consideration of alternate members. It does provide for clarification of what your duties and responsibilities are beyond. Tonight's action of applications, which you know there are. And, uh, it's something to, uh, give you homework to do.
Cause we need homework.
Which you, which you need, um, and so I'm gonna pass that out when I, when I'm done tonight, that's it.
I better be it. Okay, Dan?
All right, your, uh, next meeting on May seventeenth, you have a preliminary site plan for a single family resident, uh, on Townline Road. You have Loomis Road, uh, industrial park and lot four coming in for final site plan, so.
Like, lot what?
Lot four.
Four, okay.
Yep, uh, so that's the one that you've been working on for the last, like, two years. And we're finally to the point of they're ready to close it up and start working over there, so that area of town could be very busy. The project that you guys just approved, and if this one is approved next week or in two weeks. Uh, and then, the only other thing on is there's a site plan amendment over for Murano. Uh, their single family in their villas, they would like to add a sign. Uh, for the entrance, or entrance to the single family and the entrance at the, uh, villas. For those projects and so that wasn't on the overall site plan, so this would be an amendment to the overall site plan for Hathaway's Corners. To allow them to install two signs that pretty much say, one says the villas and one says. I can't remember what they're calling their single family side of it, but.
Okay.
So that's your next meeting, um. And, and Ron's project that you are tasked with, so, your homework. Um, and I will tell you that there is just as much stuff on the first meeting of June for you guys as well, so it's, we're getting back into that season of. Having more than one project on a, a meeting night, so.
Okay.
That's all you?
Tim?
Um, not much, just a reminder that this weekend's spring cleanup, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Cool.
And next week we should hopefully start rebuilding following.
Oh, wow, that should be.
Yeah. Rebuilding what? Following.
Okay, Lance?
Wow, I think Ron and Dan covered it all, so, uh, I'm good.
Okay, man, any comments for the board? Okay. Um, the only thing I got in here is I received a letter actually today, I heard about before that, where a. And a person came in for a permit and then issued an architectural requirement, say. Um. And they want their money back, cause I guess they didn't, they never did, right, Dan?
Uh, well, they came up that they would need a variance and they had already spent. Uh, money to, on the project and they're looking for the town to reimburse them the money they spent.
So, we can't do anything with that, but to turn it over to, to the board.
The applicant, John LaFroy?
Certainly not an issue for the planning board, I'll turn it over to them. Other than that, um. I don't have anything. Anybody else have anything? Okay. You'll not be in there? Hey, anybody else?
I got something.
Yes, go ahead.
So the new sign, uh, welcome to.
Yes.
Ninety-six. Is that, it, it's structured, is that permanent?
Yes.
Can we, that being right there, I mean, in the entrance to space. We do something to shoot something, two by fours, four by fours.
It's all, it's all gonna be landscaped, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, I mean, we're, we're not there yet, uh, Highway has done an excellent job getting them installed for us. It's a joint project with the town and the Chamber of Commerce. And the chamber is responsible for the landscaping and the upkeep of that, um, so yes, there is more to come. Um, I don't know, Sid.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Anything else to say with your town, no, you're looking to cover the posts?
Not.
I just had something around the software.
Yeah, so, so, when you're looking at it, you, you're, you're, you're seeing those posts. And I think with the landscaping, that will change it.
Okay.
Come, come back to us after we get the landscaping up, yeah.
All right.
Hey, if anybody's gonna miss a meeting, just like I figured did, let me know, I know we, this, we're getting into that seat where people are going different times, you're gonna be gone. Which, July is, right?
Um. Last two weeks of July.
Last two weeks of July, and you're also gonna be gone at the same time.
Yeah, we're fourteen through twenty-eight.
Okay, so we missed the second meeting until I told them, you guys will be here, right, last two?
I missed the first.
Remember the first, but you're here for the second.
I might agree, if he's off, the next one, I might be off the clock.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
Next one will be okay as long as Doug doesn't fake off too.
John, as like I said, I'm nineteen, I know, I'll be here.
I know you would, I know you would, but, uh, oh, just keep me informed on days and some so that we can make sure that we have a quorum. Otherwise, we can't believe, I mean, this is what it is, that time of year, you know, we may get paid, but we don't get paid that much.
How do you know if they're canceled?
I'm sorry?
How do you know if the meetings are canceled?
How do you know?
So, anytime the board cancels the meeting, we do a legal notice of that. We will also put that up on the website and it will be posted here at the town hall.
Is it on the town website?
It would be posted on the town website.
Is that emailed on the town website before, you haven't received emails yet?
So, the town website is under construction, uh, and we're trying to improve it, if, they have launched a new.
Portal?
Portal, I guess you can say, uh, within the last month, I think it is, so if you haven't been on it lately. You'll notice that there has been quite a change to the look and. Yep, the agendas are all under, uh, the planning zoning tab, I believe.
Yeah.
So, somewhere in there, uh, but they cleaned it up a lot, so it should be easier to find. Um, at any point, if you're looking for information, you can always call here and talk to the building department, we will inform you of anything that you need to, to know.
Okay, anything else? Okay, with that, I'm gonna do a turn by Tim, second by Aaron, on favor.
Aye, aye, all right.
Good to go.